Everyone and welcome to this bonus interview for Rethinking with Alex Torpe. This interview is with Lee Nave. Lee and I actually met when he was a student. He was in one of my classes in Seton Hall's Master of Public Administration program. And he also participated in a leadership development program that I created called Pathways for America, part of Run for America. Lee ran for city council in District Nine in Boston in 2019 and got almost 10% of the vote in a seven-way race where the two winners got about 25%. Lee has worked on a number of social justice and local housing and community development issues. And we cover a pretty wide range of topics. We talk a little bit about knocking on doors and what you learn from the process of actually running for office, kind of like digging deeper into policies. We talk a little bit about what it's like being an introvert in running for office, something that he and I share and that many people's perception is that you can't really be an introvert and run for office. And we talk a little bit about leadership development programs and a lot about affordable housing issues and how local redevelopment can go poorly or go well depending on what kinds of policies and programs you do. And that it is possible to preserve neighborhoods and the history of where people have lived for multiple generations if you do things right. Lee has been involved in a number of issues like that since his election in 2019 as well. Some of the same issues that he was working on before his race. And so we talk a little bit about that, how to kind of stay involved and actually get more involved and more influential, which can happen after running for office. And we talk about a number of other local policy areas, constituent services from city council and the epidemic of NIMBYism in local government. And so I really think that you'll enjoy this chat. It's about 45 minutes or 50 minutes long. Lee is a creative thinker and someone who is really committed to trying to find ways to do the right thing. So I hope you enjoy the conversation and please let me know what you think.
Thank you for having me and inviting me. Looking forward to today's discussion.
Yeah, yeah, same here. So as I mentioned in the introduction, Lee and I first met back at Seton Hall. And Lee, since then, you've been involved, you've worked with kind of a number of different leadership development programs and ultimately started to get really involved in housing issues around where you live in Boston. Talk to us a little bit about sort of your background and what built up and prompted you to want to get more involved and ultimately run for office.
All right, yeah. So right after I left Seton Hall, I got a job at a nonprofit called Citizens for Juvenile Justice. It's a small nonprofit that worked to create a more fair and just system for young people who potentially might get incarcerated, also prevent more young people from going into the system. And so there was a lot of advocacy work at the state level in Massachusetts, some at the municipal level, trying to reform the current practices of juvenile justice and also the foster care system. And so I did a lot of work with, a lot of conversations with community leaders, different electives around the state. And so during these conversations, I worked there for a little bit under five years. During these conversations that I had with folks, I noticed something when it came to electives that I didn't really like, especially at the state level and the city level. They found it very hard to really envision the idea of decreasing young people being impacted by the system. Like it was just very like black and white, like hey, if you do a crime, you do the time kind of thing. And so you would bring as much research as you can to them. You could talk about how if you look at diversion programs, which are like different ways, pathways, instead of incarceration that a kid could go through, you could talk to that, talk to them about those programs, how much cheaper they are than actually incarcerating a kid and how that actually stabilizes the kid's life more than ripping them away from their family and putting them in a center at a different part of the state sometimes. And they would still be like, oh no, this isn't what my constituents would like, or you know, I don't really like this kind of thing. I support the police. And so I had this feeling that this was something that was being impacted by, or this kind of mindset, the inability to be open and thought or just not just progressive values, but like open and thought of the idea of looking at things from an alternative lens is something that applied to a whole host of different issues. And so I was very compelled to run for office around, almost living in Boston about four or five years at that point. I had done a few programs, different programs like New Leaders Council, I'd done Pathways with you. And these were like different programs that just really sparked the idea of the concept of running for office, like what that would look like. And I did some other trainings around, like there's this mass, this thing called Mass Alliance that trains you how to run for office, like all these different programs I did and built a network. And so I talked to, I was minding my own business one day, November, early November 2018, and a friend reached out who I had met from New Leaders Council. She had worked on, she had worked with Elizabet Warren. And she was like, hey, I have a friend who ran for city council in your neighborhood a couple of years ago. He didn't do that well, but he wants to recruit somebody else to run against the current city councilor. And I actually didn't know too much about the guy. Like I'd heard of his name once or twice. And you know, I looked a little bit more into him once, once I heard, you know, the idea floated in my head of running for office. And I didn't really like his record at all. It was just, he wasn't, he wasn't in the community enough. He had been in office for 12 years. He had run unopposed several times. He had like $100,000 in his campaign war chest of mostly developer money. He just didn't seem like this person that really was representing the neighborhood that I lived in, the one that I wanted to really, I guess, lay down roots in to the best of his ability. And so I did, you know, I reached out to friends who already, like I had a friend who was a state rep in a different neighborhood. You know, I was just like reaching out to electors already just to get a feel, you know, what this would look like. And I decided to run for office.
And talk to us about that whole campaign experience. So this was in District Nine, right? And this was a multi-person race. What was that like? So you started to, you had spoken to some friends, looked into things a little bit more, realized that the values that you believed were important for this neighborhood and in the community were not being represented by the person that was there. How did you kind of move forward at that point? I mean, you know, you haven't run for office before at this point, right? So how did you kind of, you had done some of the trainings, which I imagine were helpful. But what did you do from that point forward? Like walk us through the early stages a little bit of that campaign. What did that feel like? What did it look like?
Yeah, so the early stages were a lot of learning still, like the classes and these one-day training or week trainings. They don't really do, when you actually do something, it's different. And so like I spent a while creating a list of people I knew, which is one of the first things folks tell you to do, create a list of everybody that you know, get their contact information and then ask them for money. I created a list and I started going through and asking people for money. And so I declared in mid-December of 2018. And what happens is, you know, the whole, the way finance works is like, oh, through this calendar year, you can ask people for a certain amount of money, like it was up to $1,000 that you could ask somebody for, for one year. And so people were like, yeah, you need to declare now because you want to ask people for the max thousand. And I'm like, I don't know if too many people will give me $1,000 anyway, but sure. And so I declared in mid-December and I started, you know, going around asking people for money. And I got like $4,000 or something like that. And so apparently people were like freaking out about this in like the, like different media outlets because nobody raised that much money against this guy in like 10 years. And I was confused by it because it seemed like a very small amount compared to his like nearly 100,000K. And so I raised money, but then things in life that had already like been planned before I ran for office sort of detoured me a lot in January. Like I went to Disney World for a week. And then I went to the Middle East for two weeks for the State Department project that I was part of. And so January was like a lost month. So I came back in jet lag February and started trying to do this campaign thing with friends. And a lot of that was just like trying to find a campaign manager, find a team, then try to, try to maintain some semblance of fundraising, which fundraising is the hardest thing easily about running for office to me. Because I'm not a very, I don't really, it's not that I don't like asking for help. It's just like, when I've been working in nonprofits for like over a decade. And so usually when, you know, I've asked for money in the past or written grants and all that stuff, it's for like this particular mission. But in this case, I'm the.
Right, it's for you.
Yeah, it's for me. Like, of course, you know, I have things that I want to get done if I'm elected, but it's me. I'm asking you for the money for my campaign. And so that was hard. That definitely was the hardest thing. And trying to, I had to find a friend who would sit down with me to force me to do it. Because it was just, it was just in general, it was hard because you know, you get, you get at least like 95%, if not more denials or people asking you like, why would you ask me? Or sometimes you would do cold call lists of people would do research for you. Like I had this, I like hired a consultant who did research for me. And she's like, oh, these candidates gave to, you know, I mean, these, these people gave the candidates similar to you in policy or whatnot. You should just call them and ask them for money and tell them what you're doing. And that was like really hard, the cold call list, at least the other people I could, you know, catch up with and be like, hey, I'm running for office. Give me $50. That was easier. But these like people I didn't know, that was, that was pretty hard. And so figuring that out was important. And then also making sure you're engaged as possible with the neighborhood when you're running for office, pre-door knocking. Because it's like you can door knock early on, but you'd have to like know why and where you're door knocking. And so I had to find a field person who could help me pinpoint exactly how I can get my win number, what neighborhoods would be the best from the particular demographic I need to turn out the vote. And then things really shifted in early April, transforming the campaign because the incumbent decided not to run. And so it became an open race.
Right.
And at that point, there had also been two other people who had jumped in originally, like one jumped in late January and another one in like mid-February. But then all of a sudden additional five people jumped, four additional people jumped in. So it was a seven people race now in an open seat. And our district in Boston, it was known notoriously for being the worst, or one of the worst turnouts. So whoever won might win with like 750 votes in a district that represents 72,000 people. And so I had to figure out a way to carve out, out of all these folks, out of seven people, of a potential 5,000 people voting, how I can get that 750 or 1,000 votes. And so that was some of the hardest, you know, that was definitely some of the hardest components to the campaign. And that's not even getting on the issues in, when it comes to like housing and constituent services, which is actually one of the biggest jobs the city council does. And you as a former mayor, were you a president or mayor?
Well, you know, South Orange loved the historical terms. So I think they actually, actually I think they may have changed it recently from village president to mayor and trustee to council, but I'm not sure. But yeah, the executive, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it's like, it was really a lot of constituent services, which I had heard in advance, but I didn't know as much once I, you know, started to really get into the conversations with folks. Because I could talk about juvenile justice policy or housing policy to some folks, but that's not what's impacting a lot of people's lives every day. They're more worried about this project across the, they're more worried about, you know, rats, which is a big thing in our neighborhood, rats, trash, potholes. That's the big one, potholes, signs here and there, like, oh, we should have a speed bump on this street because there's too much speed, there's too much speeding occurring, things like that. Those are some of the huge issues for folks, some voters, that I had to really dive into and figure out as best as possible.
Now, I want to come back to some of the housing stuff in a minute because I know that that's an area that we've talked about before. But before we do that, you know, in terms of running for office, one of the things that, you know, I've heard from many people who are debating whether they should be doing it or not, or just have discounted it as not a great potential way to get involved. One of the groups of people that I often hear that from is a group that we both belong to, which is the introverse. And so talk, let's talk a little bit about that. So especially for any of you out there who are watching or listening to this and, you know, feel like running for office or being an elected official or anything like that is only for people who kind of get their energy from the extroverted activities. Lee, talk to us a little bit about what it was like. I mean, you know, I mean, it feels weird. So we're in January of 2021 recording this, you know, the idea of knocking on doors right now just as like seems like, oh my God, I can't imagine going to somebody else's house right now and knocking on strangers' doors. But what was that like? I mean, you mentioned the cold calling before. I mean, what was that like for someone who isn't real, you know, may not be naturally inclined to want to just be talking to strangers every day? What was that like having to get, you know, kind of scale up, knock on doors, make those cold calls and all that kind of stuff?
It's draining. It's extremely draining to say the least. You, like, sometimes I would go to two or three community events in one night. And you know, I'd just meet different audiences. I'd have conversations with people as much as possible. It's sometimes very hard to really just walk up to someone and spark a conversation.
Right.
Which is extreme, which, you know, is part of what folks expect sometimes from an elected.
Right.
You know, somebody approached me, of course I'll have a conversation with them, but.
It's a big difference.
Yeah. And so that was hard. And of course, the cold calls and, you know, phone banking, that was, I hate phone banking.
It's tough. It's one of the hardest parts for, I think, for anybody even running, even people that are kind of more, get their energy from those conversations, sitting in a room and calling people is just not easy.
But for some reason, I actually liked door knocking a lot. That is actually my favorite part of campaigns. Even though I'm an introvert, that is my favorite part of campaigns. And it might be, I'm from the Midwest originally. So I used to, you know, I'd knock on people's doors all the time, asking them for like, like, hey, do you want me to cut your grass? Or when I was a Boy Scout, I would be like selling popcorn or something, or my associate was a Girl Scout. So I would knock on the door with her and she'd sell cookies, things like that. And so I was, I was used to like having those, those impromptu conversations with people. I wouldn't call it impromptu because I'm going there anyway. But I'm used to having those conversations with strangers, asking them for stuff at doors, in person, face to face. Those are great conversations. That part was easy to me. But the phone and sort of the disconnect of it, that was hard. And also the big events, the community events were hard.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, the door knocking, I feel like a lot of the other conversations that I've had with people who've run for office, many of us, it seems like those, those of us who are really sort of, you know, mentally, intellectually engaged in the topics of the, like of the issues, enjoy the door knocking because I imagine that you got into some really interesting conversations with people.
Oh, yeah. Great conversations, like amazing conversations. Like, I don't know, one, one time I talked to a guy about Little House on the Prairie for half an hour. I don't know how that.
That's, that's an interesting one. Now, what did that, like, is there a connection point between that and, you know, what was happening in the district? Or did you guys just kind of go on a tangent?
It was sort of a tangent because, well, he was telling me a little bit of the history of the neighborhood. Like there, you know, there used to be some industrial parts of the neighborhood. And he talked about just how almost like folks like came in and settled in. And there was like a Little House on the Prairie reference. And we started talking about the show and everything and the books. And that's sort of, that's sort of how it like led it to that area. But I hope he voted for me, by the way.
Well, maybe he's watching this.
Yeah. But, uh, yeah, it was, you know, sometimes you talking about the history of the neighborhood. And because, like I said, I'm not from this neighborhood. I'd only lived here about three years before I ran for office in this particular neighborhood. And so it was a lot of learning also in that sense. Like I spent a lot of my free time reading books, going to the little, there's a small history museum around here on this particular neighborhood. And so I was just read books. Because I was running for a district seat in all, the neighborhood is called Alston and Brighton. And like I learned that this neighborhood used to be part of Cambridge back in the 1800s before Boston annexed it after the Civil War, things like that. It just like, sort of focused me in a little bit and continued those conversations with other folks. Especially one of the biggest things that can be a detriment to you as a person who's not born and raised there is going against candidates who are born and raised here because folks feel like, you know, they already have their established networks of friends and family. But it's also like, hey, this person knows me. He knows the history of this neighborhood. So I feel like this is the person I can get behind. And so I had a couple of those folks that I was going against once the field opened up to seven people. And so I had to really, really learn more about, you know, the past, the history.
And these are all things that, I mean, you know, I think that, you know, I've talked in other discussions on the podcast about the value of door knocking, not just as a political tactic, which is necessary, but also as a learning experience for yourself as the candidate. Because you never know. I mean, it's always good to assume that you don't know everything, right? And I think that, I know that's how you sort of approach these, is that every, any opportunity can sort of be a learning opportunity. And with the door knocking, you just never know who's on the other side. And it could be someone with a totally fascinating perspective on something that you would have never come across otherwise. And it's worth, when doing the door knocking, like you were saying, like to sort of be open-minded about what you might encounter.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Like, and then there's sometimes there's action items that occur.
Right.
I would call it action events, like one, one particular woman, she was in her, her late 80s. I door knocked her door and I ended up actually going to her backyard to help her lay some rat traps. And we were conversing the whole time about the past in the neighborhood. And, you know, she told me a little bit about the neighbors, like neighbors who had been there for like 10 years and had left, had been priced out, forced to sell, things like that. And you know, you just learn a lot. And also you can do direct constituent services at the same time. So, yeah.
I hope that became like a campaign photo, you know, where you're saying like, you know, because you mentioned there was a rat problem. And it's like, you know, direct action, you know, a picture of you setting the rat traps.
Oh, yeah. I actually created a policy about it. I created a citywide policy platform for rats in particular. And I'm actually going to try to work on that. Not, I'm not, you know, of course, I didn't, I didn't win, but I'm still like working with some of, some of the elected city councils to implement that. Because due to COVID, we've seen an increase of rats in general around the neighborhood. And so I'm working on something like that. But yeah, yeah, definitely. I tried to amplify it as much as I could during the.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting one. Now, the sort of energy that it, that it sort of takes to go do all of that, was there anything in particular, like I know this is something I really, I really struggled with when I was running, was sort of like balancing that out, you know, when you come back at the end. Was there anything that you found that was kind of helpful in allowing you to recharge or keep your balance?
I, what helped me recharge actually was sitcoms when I wasn't working, like old, old, like, I went, they're not old old, but like 80, 90 sitcoms. Like I watched every single episode of Cheers while I was running, as well as Frasier. And they allowed my mind to just like fade away as much as possible. Like that's what kept me sane during the entire year, just really just decompressing after the day was done or before I went out into the field. And also I was working full-time for about half the campaign. Then I went part-time and then I went like the last two months around G O T V, I went, I was able to take a sabbatical from work. So that helped a little bit as well.
That's great. The only, the only thing, the only thing I didn't like about that was talking about the 90s is a long time ago, which is just too much. I can't handle that kind of a time scale.
Yeah, we're around the same.
Wasn't that long ago? Yeah, I think so. Yeah. Oh, man. I mean, it's like, I do that sometimes. I watched, you know, Seinfeld or something and then realized that this was filmed, you know, 25 or 30 years ago. And it's like, oh, boy, okay.
Yeah, I recently realized, I was born in 89 and I realized that I've been in five different decades already in some part of my life.
Hey, that's pretty good. That's pretty good. Interesting. All right. So now I know when you were in Boston, when you were living there and also running, housing was a really big issue. And I want to make sure to talk about that a little bit too. Because, you know, like we were talking about before, you know, a lot of people don't kind of realize how, how many issues local governments work on and also don't realize how important housing is as a policy. So reflect a little bit on that, like what was your, you know, what was your kind of take on that? And what did you, how did you see bad housing policy? What was the impact in your neighborhood and the community?
The impact in my particular neighborhood of Boston was there was a lot of development that wasn't being made to actually allow middle-class folks, folks who couldn't afford to spend a third or half their salary, well, not even a third or half of the salary or more on housing.
Right.
And so there's a lot of the creation of the new units and the price of the older units in a lot of cases were substantially increasing as well. Like my particular neighborhood, one of, like Alston and Brighton, Alston in particular has Boston University in it. And so a lot of BU as well as Boston College kids, because Boston College touches on this district as well. A lot of these, a lot of the folks who live off campus live in this neighborhood. And so student housing is something that a lot of folks who had lived here for a long time was blaming on the, or blaming the increase in the price of rents around the neighborhood. Because universities were expanding their populations, but they weren't actually building more housing for their students. And so they were going to the neighborhoods that were closest to their schools. And so landlords would rent out each one of their rooms for about $800 to $1,000. And they would have a four-bedroom, so this would be $3,600, $4,000. And then they didn't really do much upkeep for these units. So a lot of folks were paying this crazy, you know, pretty, pretty intense price for mediocre to bad housing.
Right. I got to imagine this is connected to the rat issues too.
Yeah. And that was also, you know, because of the lack of upkeep that was increasing the rat population in the neighborhood. And so with student housing not being addressed by the universities as well as the housing that's being built by the developers being mostly luxury condos, luxury apartments, there wasn't much middle ground for folks to look at the idea of, you know, investing as a family into this neighborhood. And there was also a lot of investors just buying up any house that immediately came onto the market. And so what the Alston Brighton Community Development Corporation did was they tried to reach out to folks who were thinking about putting their house on the market and say, hey, would you want to make sure that your house is sold to a person and not an investor? And so they were trying to put a stipulation, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember the top of my head, occupant. Single, not single occupancy, but it's like a stipulation where it only goes, you know, you sell it to a person and not a, not a corporation.
Right.
The reason why this was important is because in the 90s and 80s and also the mid 2000s, Harvard University, which is also in this neighborhood, they were actually using like fake shell companies to buy up a ton of different properties around the neighborhood. And people didn't notice this until many years later that it was Harvard doing this. And so Harvard ended up buying like almost 25% of Alston in particular. And so I had mentioned this before, before we got on the interview, that Harvard University, even though it's like people think of it as in Cambridge, most of it's in my neighborhood, like all their business buildings. And they also, of course, own houses that they rent out and different, a lot of businesses that they rent, rent out the space to the folks. And so housing, trying to address the housing shortage when it came to the lack of affordable housing, too much college housing because of students having to be there because the campuses weren't providing housing, as well as the encroachment done by Harvard University were like the three biggest housing issues that I actually didn't know too much about before I ran for office. Like I know, of course, there was affordable housing issue, but I didn't know about these particular issues as much as I should have before running for office. And so housing is like the biggest thing in this neighborhood and most of Boston, to be honest, when it comes to what the city council has to really work on.
And housing is connected to basically everything else, right? I mean, if, if, and from the perspective of some of the policies that have specifically hurt communities of color over decades. uh communities of color over decades in the nineteen hundreds, a lot of them were housing policies that were very discriminatory. And we were talking a little bit about like South Orange and Maplewood, which are interesting examples where, um, you know, in the history, the, the towns are considered sort of um, you know, like really interesting diverse places now. But they weren't always that way. And it took the effort of a lot of people and specific organizations like the Community Coalition on Race and others in the two towns to actually reverse the trend of, you know, real estate agents only taking white families to one area and black families to another area. And, and, and basically getting buy-in from the local governments and the communities at large, that that's not the best thing for any of us. Um, and that the best thing for the success of the community is an integrated, is a diverse but integrated community. Um, and that's something that has, I would argue, has promoted, um, you know, a meteoric rise in home values in the area and an enormous amount of culture and arts and just all sorts of things that come from having different people from different backgrounds sharing the same space together.
Yeah, um, and we definitely, there's definitely been some positives, uh, when it comes to, um, there's been more people from different parts of the country who've definitely come to this neighborhood and the city in general over the last like ten, fifteen years. Uh, and if, you know, uh, I recently became a homeowner here in my neighborhood. Uh, I've looked at the past of like not only my unit, but the ones in the condo association, like just in ten years alone, there's, they've tripled in value.
Wow.
Um, which is mad, like madness, to be honest. Um, like there is a huge um housing boom for sure. Um, but it's just, is leaving a lot of people behind.
Right.
Um, especially in the new projects, because none, there, there's also, because the last four years also, there's been a decrease in federal funding going to HUD properties. And so what we've seen also is like the um housing that's already been built, the, the house, like our housing authority, our, our federal funded housing as well as the municipal funded affordable housing projects. They are be, becoming dilapidated, to say the least.
Right.
Uh, and so there's been some alternative, uh, there's been ways to like find funding uh for upkeep of those units as well as to build additional units, but it's, it's very rare and hard to do. Uh, it's usually like you have to replace old units and then build over the old units with new units that are already been affordable. Like there's a, there's a project in Brighton right now. It was sixty-one units. They've become the most part dilapidated, but a nonprofit organization has found uh through like five or six different resources, found enough money to build not only those sixty-one units again, but a hundred additional units for senior populations for affordable housing. And these folks are at the very low income of affordable housing, like the thirty percent area medium income level, like the deeply affordable units. And so tho- that's an example of something that's good to happen. But then on the flip side, fifty of these additional one hundred units that they're building have to, fifty of those people are coming from a, a, another building down the street that has something called expiring use. Uh, which is essentially a, a building that was all affordable for about thirty or forty years. But the city contracted it for, to be affordable during that time period, but now it could be sold at market, market value. And of course with, like I mentioned earlier, like, hey, people's homes have tripled in value in ten years. If you have a building that's, has like a hundred units in it, even if they were affordable for thirty-four years, now you can sell them all at market rate, you're definitely gonna sell them. And so.
Right.
Uh, trying to find ways to also keep these uh buildings that have been deemed affordable only for a certain amount of time period under the, 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 the portfolio of affordable housing is another huge issue they were trying to address.
Right. Cause then at that point, it's like, almost like a whack-a-mole or something. You've got affordable housing coming off and you're racing to add more at, you know, at a higher rate. But so you, then it puts a lot of pressure on redevelopment of new properties where you already have it met in existing properties.
Yep. And land costs is like hmm bad here. And there's not much actual land here. So to really build new, new projects on and the land that is built, you know, found or whatnot usually goes to the top bidders. So, you know, CDCs have an issue, like the CDC in our neighborhood has a lot of issues in developing new projects because they can't compete.
And the CDC is not the CDC that we're familiar with. This is a, this is a local government.
Yeah, yeah, Community Development Corporation, yeah.
And, and these are all, there's a lot of different ways that at the local level, I mean, we were talking a little before too about, you know, I mean, New Jersey, you know, being particularly bad at affordable housing from a state level and how it does it. Then there's some things that happen at the state level, but there's a lot that happens at the local level. And there's a lot of um difficulty sometimes in accomplishing these projects. We were both, you know, kind of lamenting the amount of NIMBY-ness, uh, which for those of you who are watching this and don't know it, uh, this is the not in my backyard, um, you know, where you'd have people line up at meetings and say things like, I'm a strong proponent of affordable housing. I think this is extremely important. But I live around the corner from this proposed project and I don't think this is the right neighborhood to do it in. And they'll justify it with X, Y, or Z reason, uh, but often those are not the real reasons. Um, and the real reasons might be a bad racial bias. They might be a misunderstanding of what affordable housing is um, and how it impacts a community and all these different things um that make it um, difficult to do, but also for those people who want to see these things changed. I mean, those are people, you'd like to think that at least some of them, it's a, it's a, they're making an unintentional mistake in their position on the issue. Right? They actually do believe in the value of affordable housing and they really don't understand, you know, the pros and cons of what's happening. And that's an opportunity at the local level, in local government or outside of it, to try and engage with those neighborhoods and individuals and try to get them to see the value of doing these kinds of projects.
Oh yeah, you're, you're, you're completely right. Um, and actually I have a pretty good example of that, um, like early last year, there was this project, well, not early last year, I keep forgetting, two thousand twenty happened, twenty nineteen, early twenty nineteen. Um, there's this project by the name of uh Alston Yards and it's right by where in, in my neighborhood, we have both the uh next door to each other are the Celtics and the Bruins uh practice arenas. And in that, they're, they're like huge, you know, huge stadiums, pretty high. And there's already like these massive uh luxury apartments that a lot of the players actually just stay in during the summer or some during the year. And so there, this Austin Yards project is supposed to be four buildings at about the same height. Some were proposed to be a little higher. Right next to them. And it's also right by our, um, our highway system. And so there's not really many butters in that area, but the community came in hard pushback because of density. Density is like the big no-no for if somebody, you know, might be a NIMBY. Density is like the biggest thing, like, oh, the shadow effect. People hate shadows. Uh, and so, um, there are folks who are like yelling, yeah, we need more affordable housing, but then they would yell, oh, we need a higher rate of affordable housing, but they would also ask for the developer to decrease the amount of floors in the project, which in total would decrease the number of affordable units. Um, like there was one of the buildings with proposed to be twenty, twenty stories or something like that. Um, and they were gonna put twenty-five percent affordability in it, but then folks are like, oh, we only wanted it at sixteen. So they put it at sixteen, but they decreased affordability down to around twenty percent of it, which decreased the number of actual affordable units substantially.
Right.
Um, and so we, we, we've seen, you know, the community come in and say, hey, we want this affordable housing. Uh, but they don't really want it in some cases to interfere in their lives in any kind of capacity. And even in that project I mentioned where the uh, the, the senior, uh, the senior units, um, the, the, the project that I mentioned is gonna be a hundred and sixty units of senior housing, all deeply affordable. There's pushback uh from community members because this, this new building would be one story higher than the original building. Uh, and they, they believed that this one additional story would cause such a shadow effect that it would kill plants in the surrounding neighborhood, like all the plants would just die because of this one story. Uh, and they were like, you, you should take down a, the whole story of that. And people were like, well, that's like twenty units of housing gone. Well, we need to replace this affordable housing for these seniors who really have nowhere else to go. And so that, that's um, that is, it's a constant problem.
It is, but, but, but an opportunity too, um, because you're, you're, you know, when you're working on those things, you're at that kind of ground level with people. Um, and we need to be pushing back on people with those sorts of, um, you know, the, that don't really, um, they don't really see how all the dots are connected.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, and it's sometimes it is tough to see, uh, but you know, that's part of the value of even um running for office. I mean, you mentioned that you didn't win in your election, although I think it's worth mentioning that you got almost ten percent of the vote where the top two vote getters only, in the seven-person race, only got around in the, in the lower mid twenties percent.
Yeah.
Um, and so you had made, you had covered some considerable ground in getting support um for your campaign, I think. And um, I would, and got to put a lot of these issues out there in a way that hopefully moved the conversation forward a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, when you, when you kind of look back on that experience, which, you know, the, you know, the twenty nineteen seeming like forever ago, um, was there anything out of that experience that you felt like, um, you know, that sort of uh a lesson learned on, you know, from your standpoint, uh, did it change the way that you see yourself engaging in these issues, like going forward at all?
Yeah, um, one of the biggest lessons that I got from it was had, with, with the race being so small, like we had about a twelve or thirteen percent turnout in a district with about seventy-five thousand people. And so it was about five thousand people who voted and I, I got about five hundred votes. Um, and so one of the things I definitely learned was having a base before you even run, it's like the most essential part, because you can expand more. And because, you know, I, like I said, I lived there about three years. So I, you know, I, I had friends in the neighborhood, but I didn't have an established base, like the two people who got one and two, like one person that lived there over twenty years and been a community organizer the whole time. The other person had lived there their whole life and had worked for a, a local state rep. And so they had contacts and of course knew everybody. Um, these folks only got, each one of them only got five hundred votes more than me. But they had bases already. And so I saw that in my head, it's like, I had to build mine completely from the ground up.
Right.
While they already had this sort of leg up in this sense. Um, and so having a base now, I, like if I ran again, I, I have a base now. I, you know, I have people I know I could call on and support. Uh, so that, that's, that's the biggest one, especially in a small, such a small election. Also ranked choice voting would have been great, because after the election, uh, you know, everybody comes up to me like, oh, you were my second choice, but this was my friend. You know, it's, it's all very community, like, you know, this is such a small voting population, you know, everybody for the most part after a while, even though this play, this particular neighborhood almost tries to act like it's a suburb, even though it's a part of the city of Boston. But um, everybody's like, oh yeah, you're my second choice, uh, you know, if, if this person wasn't running, I would have voted for you, all that kind of stuff. And so hearing this, hearing, you know, hey, I'm everybody's second choice. I'm like, if I was, if it was ranked choice voting and they put me as their two, maybe I would have done better.
Right, right. I mean, it's a really important uh note, because it's one of the assumptions that a lot of people make without realizing that we make it, that just picking this person or that person is the way that we vote. Um, and we know that decision-making systems can work in different ways. And we know that there's pros and cons to each of the different methodologies that we use to do something in ranked choice, where you eliminate the, you rank people instead of picking them and you eliminate the last place vote getter if nobody gets above fifty. I mean, there would have been a couple of people who, who would have been eliminated and their votes would have gotten distributed. Um, and it would be really interesting to see how those uh change the results. I know uh Maine and Alaska um have re- recently done it. I'm pretty sure in New York City, um, they approved it for the municipal elections. You think that's coming to Boston anytime soon?
So we, we actually just voted on it and um uh, the, the, the recent election in November and it didn't pass, which was very shocking.
Hmm.
Uh, I, I, I have to talk to some folks to figure out what exactly went down, because the campaign against it wasn't even that vocal. Like, the campaign for it raised like eight million dollars. They've been pushing for it for like five or six years constantly. And it, it lost pretty bad. It was like sixty percent no. Um, and I think what it, it might have just been a communication issue, just it really explaining to people what it looks like.
Right, right.
Uh, how it functions.
It's a little technical for, for someone who's not really aware of it to know what it really is. Yeah.
Yeah, because like I said, the no one, the no one campaign was nothing. It, there was like, somebody started a campaign account and they raised like a hu- a thousand dollars, like it, it was nothing. So it wasn't because they had str- faced such strong opposition. It was a, you know, technicality, communication. And Governor Baker also did come out and say he was against it, but it was like, he said it one time in a press conference. It wasn't like he ran a whole campaign around the state against it, so.
It's hard to get the current institutional stakeholders to, 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 to wanna see this. I don't, I don't think as much, um, as I would love to see what it would do for elections in New Jersey, I don't imagine it's happening anytime soon. Because what it, what it does is it is, well, I mean, in addition to potentially lowering the cost of elections, because you don't have to pay for doing runoff elections. It just all happens automatically. Um, but it, you know, the real benefit of it is making elections more competitive, especially for outside non-two-party candidates. And I can think of, uh, well, two different people in any election who are not gonna want that. But uh, that's, uh, yeah, that's interesting. Um, and so, um, is there, is there anything else? I mean, for, for people that are like checking this out and thinking about different ways to get involved, I mean, is there anything that we didn't really cover? I mean, I know we could probably talk about this stuff for hours, but like, is there anything that you, that, that you wanna, any advice or ideas or lessons for people that, you know, might be mulling this over in their own minds?
Yeah, I think, um, really have an understanding of the community needs is, is, is fundamental before you, before you go, go about doing it. Like you can't do like a cookie cutter, like, oh, I'm just gonna do education, affordable housing. You know, you have to really sit down in these community meetings that, that occur almost every day in some communities and really understand like what folks are feeling. But then you also have to expand beyond those particular meetings and have conversations with your neighbors. Uh, because sometimes some, you know, some community meetings are just a hundred opinions when, like I said, there's seventy-five thousand people here. And so you have to really like go out beyond that and just have conversations with folks to really understand what's going on. Uh, and if you're doing a district, like if you're doing like a district or a state rep, like, you know, like a small, small section of a larger uh, a, a, a larger state or anything like that, it's really, really like localized compared to like an at-large counselor or a statewide position that you're running for. And so you have to really understand like the history behind it, definitely, or just in general, what's, who, who are the key key people to really have conversations with to understand things.
That's a, it's a lot of background, a lot of research, um, to do this the right way. Yeah.
Definitely. But it's a lot of fun. It's a rewarding experience. Uh, like I'm not trying to say it as a cliche or anything like that. Like I had a lot of fun doing it. When I, when I lost, I didn't, I, I, you know, I was disappointed, but I, I, you know, I felt good about doing it. I, I didn't regret it. Like the next day I went to IHOP, I didn't, you know, start a coup because I lost, like I, you know. I, I went to IHOP and I started organizing to help other people win their election. So it's a, cause it was a runoff, there was still like a whole nother six weeks before the uh general.
Right, right.
Like it, it, it was a fun experience, uh, and definitely changed my life and opened up a lot of opportunities.
And, and, you know, and it's sort of, you know, I think speaks to your genuine interest in the issues in the community, because, um, you know, for people who uh, you know, whether you win or lose an election, if you're really trying to make progress on those issues, it's almost not gonna, you know, the way that you do it might look different based on whether you're in the position or not, or, or not in the position, but still working on the issues and, and like not just saying, oh, well, you know, that didn't happen, you know, that's it, you know, done. Um, because making these kinds of changes is really, I mean, as you, I mean, this is really difficult. Um, you know, it takes a really long time and, you know, we're pushing back on, uh, you know, decades, centuries, millennia of doing things in very specific ways that are, you know, often not advantageous to most of us. Um, so it's, it's a long haul, um, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely. Um, yes. And also in my particular neighborhood, it always had been run by an Irish or Italian man.
Right.
And that, you know, when you look at Boston, it's usually who, who's in charge of the city anyway, but this particular neighborhood, it was like, it's not as diverse as. diverse as other parts of town. So that was also a big issue that I I dealt with, like, hey, this this black guy who's an outsider to our neighborhood already. Like, how how do we, you know, how do I sort of like convince people that I'm the right person for the job?
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, that's that's a, that's definitely climbing a hill. But I but again, I mean, you know, from starting from scratch, like you made, you made a lot of, you made a pretty big dent in things. You know, with that, and I imagine that all those people that you met are going to be like helpful contacts as you continue navigating, working on all this stuff and that whether it's you or one of them or like, there'll be ways for that group to work together on all sorts of things, I imagine.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We've like since then been doing a lot of different projects, a lot of different things working, you know. It it's been, it's been good. There's a lot of connecting. There's something always going on, for sure.
Right, right. There's a lot to do. Yeah, that's for sure. That's for sure. Well, on that note, I think I want to let you get back to your Wednesday here. But but really, thank you for for joining and sharing some of your thoughts and experiences here for people that might be thinking about this. It's pretty cool to hear. And it's fun, you know, for me to get to see, too, because, I mean, we've known each other for some number of years now and
Seven years?
Yeah. And, you know, it's just so cool. Everybody's like, we're all finding different ways to plug in and finding different ways to push in the areas that we that we want to. And I imagine that that's, you know, we're just gonna think we're all, you know, we're in this for the long haul, too. And so it'll it'll be fun to see what kind of things you work on next and what kind of hopefully figure out some ways to help Boston create some more equitable housing policies, which we can sure use here in New Jersey also.
That's the goal.
That is.
Whatever we make, get it to New Jersey.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Well, thanks, thanks, thanks again, Lee, for joining here and and, you know, best of luck in everything that you're working on.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. And I hope you continue to to do this podcast and reach at reach as many people as possible so they can hear 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 about this topic and what else you want to discuss.
I hope so.